The City of Avalon Revenue Study Session this day, Thursday, the 22nd of August. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have a roll call.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem Magoo Ginn-Cassidy is absent. So, thank you again for coming in, and I know all your schedules are busy, so we really do appreciate it. It's been a month since our very first revenue generating study session. You asked us quite a few questions for follow-up, and that's where Matt's going to start with, and hopefully some of this information will prompt more dialogue, and we'll know how to proceed forward with some more ideas.
Perfect. So, I anticipate the presentations can be a little shorter than the last one. It's really just addressing some of the questions that came out of the last study session, as well as providing some updated revenue figures, considering the June numbers are now in, and they weren't when we had the last study session. And in some cases, we have July numbers to report as well. So, just again, as a quick reminder to everyone why we're having this conversation, is the 20 budget that we adopted had draws on fund balance to pay for a number of the capital projects, as well as some operating costs in some of the funds. And so, we're looking at ways to increase our revenues, so we can have more of a sustainable operating budget as a city.
Hey, Anne, I'm Ford. Can you hear me a little better?
Oh, you can't hear well?
Can you move closer, or can you turn up the volume?
You could move closer, too, and then if you came up to say, to talk, you wouldn't have to walk so far.
Alex, can we turn up the mic a little? Is this a little better? I'll just try to speak up loud.
Oh, there you go.
I'll just speak up. How's that?
You've got a big voice.
Perfect. So, again, just as a reminder as to why we're all here, is we're looking at ways to grow revenue, so we can have a more sustainable operating budget in future years. Here's a slide to kind of illustrate where we're at as a city. As we all know, visitor-driven revenues make up a considerable portion of our operating revenues, and over the past three fiscal years, we've seen the visitor-driven revenues plateau, and in the case of fiscal year 19, possibly slightly decline from prior years. So, the chart on the side shows the main tourism-driven revenues, and as you can see, fiscal year 19, we're anticipating to come in with revenues slightly below fiscal year 18. One of the revenues that's contributing to this decrease is our sales tax. As you know, sales tax is our second-largest general fund revenue source, and for fiscal year 19, our city's sales tax revenues were down 7.9%. Statewide sales tax was projected to be up 3.5%, so we are a bit of an anomaly when you compare us to the state as a whole. One of the things that was discussed in the last study session was what ability the city has, if any, to raise its sales tax rates. Currently, sales tax in the city is at 10%. Of that 10%, 1% goes to the city, and a half a percent of that goes to the hospital, with the rest going either to the county or the state. A quarter percent increase in our sales tax would generate approximately $250,000 in additional revenues. There are 21 cities in LA County currently with a sales tax greater than 10%. I listed a few on the slide: Long Beach, Santa Monica, Compton, as well as Pomona, Glendale, Burbank, and several others. And actually, 11 cities in the November 2018 election in LA County had ballot measures to increase sales tax. 11 had them that passed. I'm not sure how many actually had them, but there were 11 cities that voted to increase its sales tax to 10 and a quarter percent in the last election. So, again, this is just a breakdown of what makes up that 10%, and then a proportional graph showing that as well. So, for admissions tax, this is another tourism-driven revenue source that we've seen a considerable decrease in fiscal year 19. The June 2019 admissions tax revenues were down 21% compared to June 2018. For the year as a whole, ad tax revenue was down approximately 10%, 9.7% compared to the last year. It's in line with where we estimated it would come in when we were developing our budget, but again, it's down 10% from the prior year. Where we've seen most of the decrease has been with our harbor admissions tax. Harbor admissions tax revenues were down closer to 25%, whereas general fund admission tax revenue, so those would be the activities on the land, were down closer to 4% or 5%. Again, from a revenue standpoint, about 80% of our admissions tax revenue is generated from land-based admissions, and 20% on the harbor, but as you can see, the harbor is where we saw the most significant decrease. Not to put everything on weather, but we did have an unusually, luckily, an unusually wet winter this year, and I thank the chamber for putting this stat together. We had 52 days of rain in 2019. I believe that's January to June, compared to just 18 days in 2018. And here's another graph showing a comparison between 2019 and 2018, and as you can see, hotel occupancy, cross-channel warfage, and harbor use were also impacted, and there seems to be a strong correlation between tourism on the island and weather, and I don't think that comes as too much of a surprise to anyone. So, we do think the increase is likely due to decreased tourism, and likely decreased tourism due to less-than-ideal weather this winter, but we do have a compliance audit scheduled for this fiscal year 19 and 20 budget, so if there is a reason other than just general decrease in tourism for the decrease in revenues, hopefully through that audit process, we'll be able to determine that. Again, this is just a comparison of the June numbers for cross-channel warfage and cruise ship warfage. We increased our cruise ship warfage by 50 cents beginning July 1st, 2018. There is a 50-cent increase scheduled every year to 2021, where it maxes out at $5 per passenger. Currently, for fiscal year 20, we're at $4 per cruise ship passenger. Revenues are up in cruise ship, but again, that was driven by the increase in our warfage rate. The overall passenger count, based on what was reported to the city, actually decreased, so we had fewer cruise ship passengers getting off in fiscal year 19. Similarly, with cross-channel warfage, we did see revenues increase by .1%, but that was really driven by the 50-cent increase each way that was passed beginning in March of 2019. Overall, passenger count was down for the year, and again, that increase is set to sunset in 2021. This is something that we haven't historically included in our visitor-driven revenues, but based on feedback I've gotten from several people, my plan is to start including or grouping mooring revenues with our visitor-driven revenue reports. Moring revenues make up the second-largest revenue source in the harbor outside of the cross-channel warfage. Happy to report in July, so this is one of the few revenues I can give you real-time July numbers, our July mooring revenues were up 4.6%. Again, we did raise mooring rates with CPI of about 3.5% with the miscellaneous fee schedule that was adopted, I believe, in May. So, we did see potentially a slight increase in the number of boats in July, but a lot of the increase in revenues is driven by the increase in mooring rates.
Question, sir.
Yep.
Does the mooring fee include the transfer fees?
This does not include transfer fees, no.
And does this include the annual?
This does not include the permit or the annual.
Okay, so this is all transient moorings?
This is transient moorings.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So, again, June, we did see an increase in mooring revenues, but it was less than the CPI increase that we increased our mooring rates in last year's fee schedule, so we did see an increase, but likely a slight decrease in the number of boats. Overall, for the year, our mooring revenues were up 1.3%. Again, that increase is likely driven by the increase in the mooring rates, rather than an actual increase in boats in the harbor, as we did also make changes to the fee structure in fiscal year 19.
So, when you say the overall mooring fee revenues totaled, does that include the transfer fees and permits?
So, this slide is just the transient mooring fees. I can provide you an update on the transfers.
Oh, I see. It's not July and, okay.
Yeah.
I was trying to.
Transfers are difficult to budget year over year.
Right.
It varies significantly, so this is purely just the daily mooring rates that people pay.
Okay, I see. Got it.
So, one of the questions that came out of the last study session was, how much tax revenue does the city generate from any given visitor on any given day? So, and again, I used, a lot of this information came from the study the chamber had performed back in June 2017, and then I made some updates to that based on information available to the city. So, the city does generate $6 in revenue from cross-channel traffic. 88% of the visitors who come to the island, if you exclude cruise ship visitors, come via the cross-channel carriers. So, when doing this estimate of how much we generate, I think it's fair to use the cross-channel revenue as part of the visitor-driven revenue if we're going to do this type of analysis. Again, that's $5 as the base rate, plus the dollar increase that's set to sunset in 2021. So, the city would generate $12.44 in general fund revenues for each overnight visitor, and 38 cents in harbor fund revenues, and this is per visitor per night, these numbers. Again, for a day trip visitor, the city would generate approximately $1.36 in general fund revenues, and 31 cents in harbor fund revenues. So, a good way to try to estimate it if you want to plan how much an event would generate to the city, a 100-person event would generate approximately $1,250 per night, so if you had a 500-person event, you could times that by 5, and if it was a five-night event, you could times it by 5. Yep.
If we're charging $5 per person head tax.
Yep.
How do we want to get 31 cents?
So, I didn't include the cross-channel warfage in the harbor fund revenue numbers there, because these are going to be per-day numbers, so we would have.
That's the harbor admissions tax?
That'd be the harbor admissions tax would be the harbor fund revenues there. So, again, I didn't include the warfage, because that's not a per-night revenue, it's kind of a one-time, so when you're factoring in how much the city would make, definitely consider warfage, but not on a per-day basis, since we only get it when they come and go. So, again, these are the, this is kind of the detail of how I came up with these numbers. I looked at the average lodging rates for 2018, so the last full 12-month year that I had data for, and I based the average amount per guest as 2.39 guests per room, and that was the number that was provided in the study the chamber did back in 2017. So, everything, I'm assuming if a room costs $200 per night, I would divide that by 2.39 to get the amount per person per night. Sales tax for meals and beverages, the number in the chamber study included tax, so I took the tax out, since the city wouldn't get any sales tax from that, and the city receives 1% of any sales tax generated in town, and so I used 1% to calculate that. Similar with shopping and amenities. For transportation on island, I used admissions tax for the general fund, and then for activities and tours, I split the admissions tax revenues between the general fund and the harbor fund. So, again, looking at the average hotel room rate in 2018, I have it broken down by quarter, so you could come up with an estimate, depending on what time of year an event were to take place, but on average, for 2018, the average room rate was $220 per night, and that breaks down to $92 per night per person. So, again, here's a breakdown, and a lot of this was using the numbers for the average visitor spend, based on the study the chamber did. What I did, since that study was a couple of years old, is I did increase the anticipated spend by 30% each year, to factor that likely the costs of the tours or the costs of items have gone up some, so, but it's really driven based on the numbers that were found in the chamber study with slight increases to assume for inflation. So, as you can see, an overnight visitor would generate $12.44, and the majority of the revenue the city would see from that visitor comes from his lodging transient occupancy tax. 47 cents would come from the city's portion of the sales tax for his meal and beverage purchases, and similar down the list. As you can see, for a day visitor, the amount generated in tax revenue to the city is significantly less, because, as we all know, transient occupancy tax is the largest revenue generator for the city by some margin. So, again, one of the things I also did is I looked at our kind of trends in transient occupancy tax, specific, considering hotel openings and closures, based on the last conversation I had with the last study session. One of the things I looked at specifically was the at-water going offline and its impact on the city. One of the things, I believe I said in the last study session, is that some of the loss in losing the hotel bed tax for the at-water was absorbed by increased occupancy at other hotels. I went back and looked at the numbers to see if that's the case, and while it somewhat is the case, that we did see increase in occupancy in other hotels, the reason our TOT revenues remained flat even after the closure of the largest hotel on the island was that the average room price saw an increase of 13%, so some of the loss of the at-water was due to, was absorbed by higher occupancy at other hotels, but the majority of it was really absorbed by increased room prices overall. You know, so, one of my takeaways is that I think there's some reason to be optimistic with the at-water coming online, that we may see the stagnant TOT revenues increase, but also with the increased number of rooms, that could put pressure on driving the average room price down, in which case, the benefits we would see from increased visitors staying, some of that might be lost by decreases in room prices. So, I hope to be able to provide a better update, once we have a few months of operations with these new hotels online, and hopefully the case is, is we don't see pressure to drive the room prices down, but we see an increase in overall nights rented out.
And some of those rooms are rented, because we've had all these workers here, like the Holiday Inn, so it'll be curious to see how busy they are now that it looks like a lot of these projects are closing.
And for that, when we do have visitors, if a room's booked out for more than 30 days, we might not necess, or we wouldn't see any transient occupancy tax on it. So, the Munich Code defines a transient as someone who's staying 30 or fewer days. So, if a construction worker is in town for three months, and a room is rented for that individual for the full three months he is in town, they wouldn't, that wouldn't be subject to any transient occupancy tax.
But how can somebody change the use of their hotel rooms without going through some, something?
So, our code allows for non-transient rentals, provided there is an agreement with the individual in the hotel to rent out the room for greater than 30 days. So, how it would be reported to the city is, they would still report the number of rooms being rented, but there is a line in our reporting to identify if and how many beds that were rented out, were rented out to non-transient rentals, and those would be excluded from any TOT calculation.
Most of the construction guys go home on the weekends.
I know, so that, then that's not a 30-day rental, so we should be getting the TOT.
If, and again, it goes down to the contract of how the room is rented. If that room is rented out for 31 days, even if the construction worker were to go home, if the construction company is paying for the room for that night, then it, so as long as the room is being paid for, for 31 consecutive nights, then whether the construction worker stays or goes home's irrelevant, as long as the room is being paid for for the.
I guess I don't know why we don't have more of a say in that.
I just know that, say, like the Beach House, we were notified in writing that they were going to be renting it for long-term.
Right, and so we got no money out of that.
No.
No TOT.
Seems like we should have some say, and there should be something that we get out of that. I mean, oh, well, just my opinion.
Yeah, Nick, a comment?
Please.
Informally, at our monthly board meetings, several of our hotels who have been renting those large blocks of rooms to construction companies have shared, so I believe this to be true, that when they wrote their contracts, they were doing their best to keep the available rooms in their general flow on weekends, so they were writing agreements for recurring weekday rentals with rooms available on the weekend. There may be exceptions to that, but that's what's been shared in our meetings, so.
So, the assumption is then that they rent them when they rent them on the weekends, that we might get that TOT?
Here's my contracted rate to rent for four nights on a weekday basis for this time span versus four months of continuous, but I'm only sharing what has been shared.
Right.
I don't know that 100% did it that way.
We get the TOT for everything, because nothing's over 30 days.
And we did have a, an audit of our hotels, and a third of the hotels in operation were selected for the further review, and one of the things the auditors did consider was, and even making their selection, is they look for hotels that were claiming rooms out of service due to non-transient rentals, and that was one of the factors they considered in their selection criteria. And so, I recall possibly one hotel there being a finding related to that, but we have completed that audit, and by and large, the, I was very pleased with the overall compliance levels of the hotels and their reporting. So, I want to thank the business community for their faithful reporting. I was very happy overall with the results of that audit. Obviously, I would have liked more money coming into the city, but in a lot of ways, it's better that everyone faithfully reports, so.
Great.
So, just real quick on transient occupancy tax, just to provide an update on the June numbers. Our June TOT was down 2.3% compared to last year. For the year, TOT as a whole was up 0.6%, and it was actually up from where I had estimated TOT to fall when I prepared the estimates for the fiscal year 20 budget. So, our general fund starting balance, you could think of as $94,000 higher, because my TOT estimate was slightly low. One thing to keep in mind, even when we see TOT up slightly for the year, our operating costs are increasing more than 0.6% a year, so and TOT is our, by far, our largest revenue source. So, if our TOT revenues aren't increasing at a rate comparable to our operating costs, even slight, while slight increases are preferred to decreases, we really need to be growing TOT at a level similar to how our operating costs are increasing, or we will eventually have to draw on fund balance potentially to pay for it, considering it is our largest revenue source at the city. So, while 0.6% increase for the year is better than a decrease, we really need to be growing it at a 30-plus percent a year to keep up with our increasing operating costs.
Or we decrease our operating.
Or we decrease our operating costs. A lot of our operating costs are tied to labor, but, you know, that is also something we definitely can and should look at. Just a real quick update on where we saw growth in our TOT revenues. Our short-term vacation rentals saw an increase in fiscal year 19 of approximately 5% over fiscal year 18. So, while hotels were relatively stagnant, or even slightly below fiscal year 18 numbers, we did see an increase in vacation rental ship TOT. Short-term rentals account for about a fourth of our overall TOT rentals, so that's just something to keep in mind when you're crunching the numbers. And then, one last thing, just to show the city is actively managing its revenues, is we did recently complete a short-term rental compliance review utilizing host compliance, and as I mentioned previously, we also recently completed our hotel TOT audit. With regards to the short-term rental compliance review, we have already sent out letters and started to receive some revenues in hotel, or vacation rentals coming in, reporting their non-compliance, and paying for licenses and any back TOT owed. We have more letters sending out, but we're happy to report that we're bringing in some revenues from those efforts.
Is the back TOT in some instances $12?
While there have been some that are a lower amount, we have had individuals report thousands of dollars in back TOT owed. What I've instructed or told businesses when they come in is that to faithfully report any back TOT owed, and I remind them that the city does have the ability to audit their books and records. So, if we were to consider a vacation rental TOT compliance audit in the future, you know, one of the things we could consider in making our selection is past compliance. But as people report, it's been my representations to them, that I encourage them to faithfully report, but at a certain point, we do take people at their word, until we then go and verify with the compliance audits.
Well, and again, are we still kind of working on that whole issue of the, is that at the Planning Commission level, or is that here with us on that?
Finance has been working with planning on the issue of non-compliant vacation rentals. From what I've seen, the larger issue isn't necessarily active properties that aren't reporting to the city or aren't paying. What I've seen more of is hotels, or not, excuse me, not hotels, vacation rentals that may have a CUP, but they're not paying any TOT, but they're also not actively listed on any vacation rental site. So, what that tells me is more likely than not, they have the CUP, but they're not really using the property as a vacation rental. So, planning is sending out notices to those properties, letting them know that as a condition of their CUP, they do need to be actively renting them out. But I think the issue is likely more that we have CUPs not actively being used as CUPs, rather than CUPs not paying TOT, if that makes sense.
Well, okay, so is there a discussion between finance and the Planning Commission on, I know we've discussed it briefly, a minimum amount of money to maintain that CUP instead of just giving us $12 and a business license?
I know planning, Amanda Cook and the Planning Department have been in discussions with the Planning Commission over that. I haven't been involved in those conversations, but if, obviously, if there were a minimum amount, finance would be involved in making sure people are complying.
I just hope that's moving forward, because we've been discussing this.
Mayor, last night at the Planning Commission, Amanda did say, I believe it was 65 letters went out just yesterday to the short-term vacation rentals that have been showing that they're inactive, so they were, they sent out, I believe, 65 letters, and they have 60 days to respond, saying that they're either relinquishing it, or do you owe back TOT, or what's been going on with your property. So, we're trying to clean up that end of it. And what was your other question, Mayor, about? Oh, they did have a discussion last night on the CUP process, if they were going to restrict them. They were just really getting into the weeds yesterday at that meeting.
Okay. I mean, I just hate to think they go, again, here's the business license, and here's $12 for the last 20 years. That's ridiculous.
And, you know, when we do a compliance audit, one of the things we could consider in making our selections is people that are reporting a low amount, you know, they may be someone who's a higher risk for non-compliance, so we may, you know, wait our sampling to take that into consideration. But again, I'd likely defer to the judgment of the auditors we bring in, who specialize in these sorts of audits.
Okay. So, and you made a, you made a comment about the TOT not increasing, and then you said, "How to grow."
Yeah.
How to grow those numbers? What is how to grow those, how, who does that fall on?
I think that's, that's part of the reason we're having, you know, these meetings here. I know one of the things that was discussed in the last study session was the goal of getting more events on the island, particularly in the off-season.
Right.
You know, that, that would be something that potentially would, would grow TOT revenues without necessarily increasing the percentages charged.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
So, just real quick, following up on the cost of service study, so in the last study session, I went into more detail over how our actual costs for operating the sewer and solid waste weren't necessarily in line with the projections when we developed our rates. So, the issue with that is if our costs are outpacing what the projections are, our revenues are going to be in line with what our projections were, because revenues were fairly easy to predict. We know how many properties are on the island, we know how much per property is charged, and so we are bringing in revenues in line with what the cost of service study anticipated. What's, what's not happening, though, is our operating costs, particularly in the sewer, but also in the solid waste fund, are higher than what they were projected when we developed those rates. So, as a result, we've been having to draw on fund balance to pay for the sewer and solid waste funds. One of the asks from the last study session was kind of a breakdown of what we felt were last study session was kind of a breakdown of what we felt were recurring versus one-time costs. And so what I've done here is break it up into three categories, not to dwell too much on it, but our utilities in 2017 and 2019 were about $50,000 higher than projected, and in 2018, they were about $150,000 higher than projected. And I'll go into more detail as to why that was. But as you can see across the board, we did have some increased maintenance costs that weren't anticipated in the last cost of service study, as well as some contracts increased greater than were anticipated when we performed the last cost of service study. And what the anticipated recurring column means is essentially that going forward, these are some of the operating costs that we foresee increasing beyond what the projections were in the last cost of service study. So as mentioned during the budget, I looked at how we were allocating our insurance costs and adjusted how much we were charging each fund based on their overall risk and activity in the given service. Our largest insurance claim in the last five years has been sewer-related, and so one of the things we considered when looking at how much of our insurance bill to allocate to the sewer was the claims data and the claims history. Vehicle maintenance also is something we looked at, and this was previously, very little was allocated to the sewer for the vehicle maintenance. The sewer does have the backer truck, as well as other pieces of equipment, and in talking to the garage, they spend about 10% of their time working on sewer-related activities. And so we've adjusted how much of the vehicle maintenance internal service fund gets allocated to sewer based on those representations and the spending we've seen in the vehicle maintenance fund. And so again, if you look at how I came up with the numbers in the recurring, is those are ones we've seen going back two years, and we anticipate seeing again going forward five years, or three years. So I multiplied those numbers by five to come up with an approximate amount of recurring costs not being recovered in our rates. For the anticipated future ones, those are ones we're going to see in the next three years, but didn't necessarily see going back the last two, so those I would have multiplied by three. And then lastly, the one-time costs. So one of the things we had mentioned last time is there's a study we have to do every five years as part of a regulatory requirement, and that cost was approximately $25,000, but wasn't anticipated in the last cost of service study. And so that would be an example of something that's in the one-time. Solid waste, I didn't go into as level of detail. The main issue there is we do have landfill closure costs that we're going to have to pay once the landfill reaches its capacity. Those closure costs weren't anticipated at all in the last cost of service study, so what that essentially means is all the money we've been generating in revenue from that, none of that was anticipated to go towards paying the closure costs that we've had to pay. And so all our closure-related payments have been coming out of existing fund balance. And the amount right now that I have down there is $650,000. That's based on a closure in the next nine years, if the cost of closure were to increase greater than what was, than what we currently anticipate, or if the usage or the capacity of the harbor, or of the landfill is less than that being anticipated, that would just accelerate the payments that we'd be required to make. And so that's why we really need to be considering the landfill closure costs in our solid waste rates, because right now, we don't have a fund balance that would cover the entire closure costs if we had to use fund balance to pay for that.
So is that the thing we're saving, like, we're trying to put in the trust about $300,000 a year?
About $150,000.
Yeah.
So we, for this year's budget, we had budgeted $150,000. We have it planned out over the next eight years, and it is ramping up as far as amount we contribute, I believe. Obviously, it's not in the budget, but we're anticipating putting in the budget $200,000 in the '21 budget, and $250,000, I believe, in the '22 budget. So we are going to need to ramp up our amounts we're contributing, and this is all based on the assumption that we have eight and a half years' worth of space. If that were to decrease, the amount we'd have to contribute would correspondingly increase. So if our closure were to cut in half, or we would have to more than double our contribution to make up for that. And we're working to verify those numbers, so we're doing another flyover later on this fall or early winter, where they'll go over the landfill and calculate the remaining airspace, and we're going to be updating all of those numbers, so we'll have a much more accurate picture of how much lifespan is left in that.
When was the last time?
2016.
No, no, not the, how much did it cost, how much did it cost to close?
Oh, four and a half million, I think is the last estimate I saw.
And when was that?
2015, I believe it was 2015, but then they've added a 2% increase each year, but the last time, I think, a full study was done for the closure cost. I could be mistaken, but I believe it was 2015.
So you closed that, and then we have to find another piece of land for more?
Nope, ship it.
No, we ship it, or we find other strategies. Right now, we're currently looking at other, other things that we can do to delay closure as long as possible. And so we're in active communication with other consultants and other companies out there that have different technology that have been employed in other landfills. So we're trying to figure out, you know, what would be the most cost-effective on one side, but also extend out the, or maximize the lifespan that we currently have.
So if you ship everything out, then you start over?
No.
No, ship out for the rest. And then the closure cost would basically just pay for closing the landfill and then the ongoing maintenance. So once the landfill's closed, that would be it, and we would still be obligated to continue to do annual testings and other activities.
Okay, but then we still need another landfill site. Then we just ship everything out from there on out?
Yep.
Really?
Put it on there.
Well, I know that, but, oh my goodness, that'll be an expensive little number. Okay. If that is the option, hopefully we'll come up with something more creative and.
Yeah, we're working hard on that.
I know, thank you.
Can I ask you a dumb question? Why is the falcon error in the sewer?
Because of the cease and desist order.
That's the harbor. He's trying to clean up the harbor. I just, another fund I can go into.
To put it into the harbor?
Yeah.
Well, I think originally, we had it in the harbor. We moved it out. The harbor was very much impacted on this budget and the last one.
To my knowledge, it's been in the sewer at least since the fiscal year '17 budget. I don't know if it's previously been charged elsewhere. Again, I think the cease and desist order is what drove it being included in the harbor, or in the sewer, because it was related to a finding in that. But I mean, that's something we could potentially look at to.
But only you look at all the projects that the harbor has, the more we keep dumping into the harbor fund, all our capital improvement projects that are required in the harbor aren't going to get done either, so.
But I mean, if there is a more legitimate case that it belongs in the harbor, and that's something we can discuss, because it should be charged in the fund that it makes the most sense to be charged to. So if that is the harbor, we should look at that, but if it's the sewer fund, and if it was identified in the cease and desist order, and I think that's probably likely why we've historically included it in the sewer fund, but we can look into kind of the rationale as to why it's there, and if it makes more sense elsewhere. But we really want to make sure it's being charged to the fund where it makes the most sense.
See.
Forty K isn't really much, is it? Forty K isn't really very much.
No, but the 40 K is what's over the estimate. Our falcon error contract is closer to $90,000 a year. We had, when we came up with the cost of service study, we had projected $50,000 a year.
And then we doubled that.
Because that's what we were paying at that time, and yes, and then we increased it.
We increased it, yeah.
So one of the other things, and I think this is the fourth thing that I was asked in the last cost of service, or the last study session, was to look into why the significant increase in utilities. I was able to isolate it to one service account. It's for water at the wastewater treatment plant. As you can see, when they would have been developing the cost of service study, they would have been looking at the historical data. You can see before March of 2016, our usage was a fraction of what our current usage is. I'm not an engineer and expert in this, but it's my understanding that there was a process change that was made in March of 2016 due to a regulatory requirement that increased the amount of water usage required related to waste coming through the sewer system. Bob is in discussions with our contractor who manages the treatment plant to get more information, but it's our understanding that it was a process change due to a regulatory requirement that led to this increase in water usage at the treatment plant. I hope to have more specifics for you, but that's kind of where we're at on that research at the time.
Mayor, I would like Michael to report on that.
Oh, I was also just going to add to that we're in conversation with Montrose Environmental just to see if there are other operational changes that we can make to still meet the mandate, but lower the potential water costs. And so we're still exploring that and hope to have a more definitive answer in the next week or two.
Great. So reclaimed water could help with that, if we had reclaimed water?
From my understanding, potentially. Something to do with the salinity in the current system that we have and the process that they're using, but I'm not the wastewater treatment expert, so I want to say it may. But we'll also need to evaluate the feasibility of what the reclaimed water system would actually ultimately be, and if it would save operationally.
Because we took that out of somewhere, right? What were we studying? What were we studying where there was the reclaimed thing, and we took the line out?
That was on the capacity charge.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, we were waiting for the feasibility study to be completed before we moved forward with implementing a capacity charge for that.
Okay, all righty.
And then I've asked Amanda to come in, if you had some more CUP questions. Amanda, one of the specific ones that the mayor was asking, like those 65 letters that you sent out, ones that, to see if they're still active, CUPs, and the minimum amount that they're paying, is that a discussion that you're going to have with the Planning Commission of maybe increasing, so it's not like $12 just to keep that certificate?
I believe that's one of the things we had talked about in that joint meeting that we had, I don't know, seven or eight months ago, was possibly imposing a minimum amount in TOT payment that would be required to keep the permit active. And I don't believe we got a consensus to go forward with considering that, so that's not something the Planning Commission has currently been discussing. We are, excuse me, preparing to bring forward the proposal to convert future CUPs to a license, and it would no longer be a land use entitlement, but there wasn't support to convert the existing ones to some type of license, because they'd have to be sunsetted, and it was a whole nother process. So that's something that's coming back to you. The letters have gone out, or they're, the last few of them are going out today and Monday, to see if people want to keep their CUP active, even though they haven't been paying any TOT on it. And there'll be a process they'll have to go through to do that, to prove that they've been renting it, to prove that they've had income, pay us our back TOT, and then stay an active permit going forward. If the council wants to look at a minimum payment, so that they're not just a minimum dollar amount, then that's certainly something that we could consider.
Just to add and clarify, on these 65 properties, these properties weren't identified as having active listings on Airbnb, VRBO, those sorts of sites. They didn't, they weren't flagged as exceptions in our host compliance review, so we do think more likely than not, these are non-active, not actively being rented as short-term rentals, although there is a possibility that we missed them. But more likely than not, we think these are truly non-active CUPs, rather than CUPs not paying TOT.
So on a non-active CUP currently, they can just keep doing that if they buy a business license and give us $12, or they're not even buying a business license?
I believe what we have told them, if they, most of the letters that we're currently sending out, they have a business license. We've been carrying them on our TOT list, but they haven't paid any TOT in quite some time. Because it's a land use entitlement, we would have to actively revoke it to get it off our active but non-paying TOT.
So we have the ability to do that now, and do you think we will then move, that is something that's decided by the Planning Department and not the Planning Commission?
No. Revocation hearings have to be a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission.
Okay, but I mean, okay.
They have an entitlement. It doesn't appear that they're using it, so, because they're not paying any TOT. We don't have any other evidence that they're renting it
Right.
illegally. So we want to get them off our list. Either they want to stay active and start renting it and paying TOT, or they can voluntarily give it up so that we're not carrying it on our books as an active permit. Or if we don't hear from them and they don't respond, then the city can schedule a revocation hearing and actually take the entitlement from them.
Can or will?
It's a discretionary approval by the Planning Commission. It goes to the Planning Commission, here's the facts. Do you want to revoke their conditional use permit? I think the recommendation from staff would be yes, because they're not using it, they are not. The code says if you have a land use entitlement, a conditional land use entitlement, you're supposed to exercise it and use it, or you lose it.
Right. So do you feel that the commission wants to talk about, see, I know when I brought it up, about, well, maybe it should be the cost of what a hearing is, and then Barton Glass got up immediately and said, way, that's way too much money to charge once a month. But do you think they will be able, can they deal with that, Planning Commission, or is that something we just needed?
I think the question was, when we had our joint meeting, there didn't seem to be support for the Planning Commission to consider or debate a minimum fee amount, or a minimum TOT payment amount in order to keep the permit active. We've taken the position historically, if they rent it one time a year, for one day, they can, they pay us TOT on that rental income, and it keeps the permit active.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't know, I'd either like the Planning Commission to deal with that, or us to deal with that, because December, January 1st is going to come around pretty quick, and I'd like to have something like that resolved one way or the other. So do you want to kick that to the Planning Commission, or do we want to deal with it?
I think it might be worth the study to find out what the administrative costs of all the TOT, all the transient occupancy permits is on an annual basis, and we can allocate backwards. So accounting's spending, finance is spending X amount of hours administering this program, and each hour costs X amount of dollars, and there's like 300 certificates out there, and you can allocate it back, that way, the administrative costs.
And the Planning Commission costs, and the time it costs when you have Planning Commission meetings, and.
Their application cost, which has gotten up there kind of high, covers all of the administration of the application, supposedly. Then it kind of leaves the Planning Department, and it becomes the responsibility of the Finance Department. They manage the business license, they manage the TOT payments, so whatever it's costing the Finance Department to maintain that.
Right.
Program.
That's legitimately recovered.
Then that's, I agree with.
Well, how about your time to send out 65 letters?
That's 3,000.
But that's a one-time enforcement action.
That could be an annual thing, depending on how we move forward.
You could roll.
And we do inspections of transit, we have an inspection.
We have, there's an inspection program on the books. Currently, we are only inspecting the new ones as they come in for applications. We've not implemented going back and inspecting current active permits. We were told we wanted to bring the year-round rental inspection program online first, that that was a higher priority, so we're working on that as part of John's responsibilities.
Okay. So land use is the way you could, kids, where the commission seems to be going with the land use permit instead of the.
That it'd be more like a type of business license than a land use entitlement, so.
And then when the property sells, it doesn't go with it?
Correct.
Do you seem to have a great consensus among the commissioners?
Yes, we're prepared to bring that forward. The last thing they're talking about is trying to reach some type of consensus about how we look at saturation and bring that forward for your review as well.
Oh, boy, that's a tough one.
It is. It is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Amanda? I'm sorry.
Okay. Thanks, Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda.
I'd actually. That actually brings me to the end of what I prepared to talk about, so I thought we'd turn over the rest of the time if there are any other areas you'd like staff to look at in more detail, or if there's any other further discussion on anything that we previously mentioned during the presentation.
Did you get your questions answered, Ole?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Councilman Hayes?
I'm good.
I, in light of the successor agency money going away, which is like half a million dollars, I think we should talk about the absence, the absence in sales tax, which would generate 250,000 to help cut that deficit.
The quarter or a half?
Quarter.
Quarter.
Again, just to add, or to clarify what Ole's referencing is, the city receives an administrative allowance for managing the successor agency. Previously, our allowance was closer to 750,000 a year, but as activity in the successor agency has wound down and we don't have any current active projects that were started during redevelopment, our administrative allowance that we receive for managing the successor agency has correspondingly decreased. And so in the fiscal year '20 budget, we receive 500,000, or we're anticipating to receive 500,000 less in administrative allowance to manage the successor agency, and those were general fund revenues that the city was able to use to manage the successor agency. So we did experience a $500,000 decrease in our general fund revenues as a result, and that's just to add to what Ole was referencing there.
So we lose 500,000 revenue, but we don't lose anything in expenses?
Yeah.
And so either we're going to have to seriously look at our overhead costs or try to replace that revenue.
I guess my question is, overall, with all the assumptions you've given us, what would be a number, a total number, that we should generate every year to keep us good between the sewer and the this? I mean, I'm assuming, because the sewer rates and all sewer saltwater and that will probably go up after the study, so we don't want to count that. But then there's also the major part, like, so what's, what's a good solid number that we feel we should be striving for?
This year's budget is 1.8 in the hole.
Okay, so we should try to generate 1.8 million dollars a year?
I mean, the, the only caution I say going with the bottom line numbers, some of that's related to our housing authority, and we do have monies in the housing authority that have to be spent on housing-related projects. So some funds I don't, I'm not as worried about draws on fund balance in, say, the housing authority fund, but in other funds where there's maybe less monies available, it's more of a concern. So the 1.9, I think, bottom line number includes the housing.
1.2 then.
Okay, so how, let's figure out how we're gonna generate 1.2 million dollars. Okay, so we'll start talking about ideas or what? Did you come?
So we do have, and again, when we approach this, I think it's gonna make sense to break it down by, by fund. And part of the cost of service study that the RFP that was approved by council on Tuesday is going to look at our sewer, saltwater, and solid waste rates, which ultimately is our sewer, saltwater, solid waste revenues. And so what potentially could come out of that study is a proposed increase in those rates to generate enough revenues in those funds to cover the current operating costs.
Right, so take that out of the mix. How much is that from the 1.2 then? Or you didn't?
I don't have that, those numbers in front of me, but we can definitely come back and provide a breakdown of a target, if you will.
Well, is it 340, three, three or 400,000 dollars, do you think?
It's closer to seven.
700,000?
Yeah.
So now we only need to generate 500,000 dollars?
In the general fund.
Okay, and that's the one main thing we're concerned with, if everything else is gonna take care of itself?
The enterprise, we can adjust pricing for the enterprise fund so that we'll break even.
Okay.
They'll recover the right amount. The general fund, we don't have that same flexibility.
Okay, so we need to raise 500,000 dollars a year? Massa menno.
I mean, again, I was projecting TOT revenues to be relatively flat. I think at a 2% increase. If we were to hypothetically see better than that with hotels coming online, that could, but I caution to, given uncertainties in the economy as it is, I caution to solely rely on, you know, hope, I don't say hope, but increased hotels online doesn't guarantee increased TOT revenues. We could see prices go down with more beds available, and given uncertainties in the economy as a whole, there, I feel comfortable with my 2% increase estimate, and I would love to be proven wrong at the mid-year budget, but I hesitate to, to increase those, increase my assumptions in our, in our revenues.
But the situation is, is if we're gonna put anything on the ballot, we have to figure it out by October 24th.
That is, that is the pickle we're in, if you will.
Right, so I think we need to speak more aggressively on how we're gonna get about 500,000 dollars, and because other costs will go up 3% and all of that. I mean, we didn't give our staff a raise or anything, but, you know, so we're kind of doing our, that's correct, right? So we're kind of doing our, trying to do our bit.
So just, just to clarify on that, we didn't have any cost of living increase in the latest MOU, is I believe what Annie's referring to.
Yeah, exactly.
So last, so a few times staff has come forward with a few ideas, just tax-wise, and I know you've come up with some, like, special events and suchnot, and that one of them was raising the sales tax, so we could definitely bring that back as an item for you to approve or not approve at a formal city council meeting. The other one was talking, ongoing conversation about TOT, and our, my suggestion was an additional 2%, which you guys poo-pooed, and that 2% would strictly just come to the city's coffers, not be split, the 22% going to the chamber. So I was led to believe at the net last city council meeting, Mayor, that you mentioned the idea of decreasing the TOT to the chamber.
Right.
And so I believe in today's thing Matt told you, 1% decrease is like 54,000 dollars to the chamber, so...
And a 2% is 100,000 dollars.
Yes.
So if there's a...
That would be something that I would like to consider, and that I would like this body to consider. I think whatever we put, I mean, this is our time, and the community will speak on what they actually want, but I think to have, give people the option, but I think we need, and I don't want to call it sexy, I mean, I think whether it be a sales tax, a reduction of the TOT to the chamber, or another suggestion I might have in a minute, that, just to say the city needs money isn't very sexy. I mean, that's a, that's a hard sell, I think. So I guess what I'm saying, you know, what do we need this for? If we put something on the ballot, I guess there's always a pro and a con, that we, like, hopefully we would put out the pro for, let's say, the sales tax, but somebody else has the ability to put the nay on that? Is that how that works? Or do we have to do pros and cons both ways, or we just go pro, and then people who don't, who oppose it just put something in the newspaper?
We put an impartial analysis of it, and then the public can, somebody can come forward with a pro and somebody can come forward with a con.
Those are like the back pages of those ballots?
Yes.
Right. And then, once it's on ballot, staff would only be able to educate, we would not be able to advocate. So we can't, we can't...
Oh, that's good, too.
We can't go beyond an impartial analysis.
Okay, okay, so...
There's a light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes?
The outwater in a full year should generate about 460,000 dollars in bed tax.
So if we reduce the TOT, then, then they're still gonna get a lot more money than they're getting now?
Still get...
What, how much? Of the 400 and, not really.
So they would, 100, they get 22%, so roughly 100,000.
Okay, so if we, okay, so they've already got paid back a...
Not if you take it down to 20%.
Not if...
Saying to take money back.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right. It's...
It's not a wash.
Oh, okay. Half of a wash?
I mean, it would, it's been dry.
You know, right or wrong, and I'm not, you know, I'm not picking on you or the chamber, but, but we also get comments about, well, you give way too much money for the chamber and blah, blah, blah. And I guess that's would...
We don't give away anything. The voters said that's...
Well, baked in 1960.
No.
Seventy, what?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, okay, that's 20 years ago.
It's not bad, I'd be asking the question, but it's not our money to begin with.
It's the people who come to the island's money.
The people who voted, the residents that voted, they gave it to, allocated to the chamber for sales and marketing. If we take it back to the chamber, that's gonna reduce the amount of sales and marketing we have.
Or more creative sales and marketing on behalf of the chamber, I mean...
It's changed.
What?
They're not spending the money that they used to spend the money.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not saying negative, I'm just saying.
But if you take it away, they have less resources. And I think the economy will impact.
Did we get any statistics on what other cities do and where they...
So I did try to put together, and before I bring this up, one of the challenges or cautions is it's hard to really compare apples to apples with how chambers work and how cities work with relation to promotion and tourism. So generally what I've seen, and I did inquire from other cities, generally speaking, other tourist-based cities, so I got numbers from Waro Bay and from Napa, or Yountville, which is in Napa, they contribute less to the chamber, but they also have a, kind of a marketing promotion arm within the city.
Convention visitor.
So they, they have a director or manager whose job is very similar to what I'd say the gym or a chamber position would be, where they are, you know, advocating and promoting the visitors and tourism in there. So it's difficult to compare how much we give our chamber to how other, how much other cities give their chamber, because some cities that are tourism-driven kind of do that promotion in-house, whereas others, like, like we do, kind of have the promotion being driven by, by the chamber. Another challenge, and a lot of people have asked me for comparisons of TOT to other cities, one of the challenges in comparing is there's a number of cities that kind of separate out their TOT that would go towards promotions, whether that's transferred to a chamber or to their internal budgets for tourism. What I mean by that is Long Beach, for example, has a 12% TOT, I believe, but they also have a 2% or it might even be 3% tourism improvement district tax. And so that 2% you can kind of think of as like our contribution to the chamber where it's money set aside devoted to promoting that city. And so it's been a challenge for me to come up with a true apples-to-apples comparison of other cities for that reason. I do have a slide here showing what some other cities give to chambers, but again, the reason I didn't include this in the full presentation is because a lot of these other cities may have internal marketing promotion going on, and so they aren't paying for that through contributions to the chamber, they're paying that internally through staffing and through, through marketing being paid for by the city rather than by a chamber. So from what I've seen, yes, our contributions are more, but it's really not an apples-to-apples comparison.
If I may add to, we are, the word chamber is at the front of our name, but we are, for all intents and purposes, this much a Chamber of Commerce and this much a Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, you know, to look at other communities and compare, and I don't know, I don't know exactly these, Matt, without doing my own homework on them, but what we do under the guise of the Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau is much more destination marketing and management functional than it is to traditional Chamber of Commerce, which is that business networking...
Ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting, you know, glad handing. In many communities, a chamber function that's very important to their community and why they would get some city funding is serving as an arm of economic development. But those are in places where you tear down a two-story building and build a 20-story building, or you take a vacant parcel and build a strip mall, and, and, you know, and they're working in that advocacy role of bringing new economies and new businesses online. And in this environment, that's not, that's not where, that's not how our economy grows. Our economy grows on the backs of the visitors, so...
I have a question, Jim. Thank you. I have a question. You have how many chamber members?
About 248, 249.
So what percentage of those, or how many of those, rely totally on the Chamber of Commerce for their advertising and don't put any money out themselves?
I don't know that I can answer that with, with absolute, I can give you a gut, you know, feel. We have maybe four members who I'm aware of have an actual marketing budget where they, that they routinely refer to when, when we work with them.
So the island company, the express?
Metropole.
The Metropole...
Canyon or Holiday Inn?
Yes, Holiday Inn.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's not to say that others don't have somewhere in their line items monies that they refer to as marketing, but, but they're very small amounts, I would guess.
Okay.
Yeah, and since I'm standing here for the moment, I mean, you know, as I, as I hear, you know, $100,000, and to Councilmember Olson's point, I mean, that would be a major cut, you know, would we stop doing the visitor guide for which we're seeing increasing demand? You know, two years ago, I would have stood here and said, oh, a paper visitor guide is ruining, you know, is going away, that's not what consumers want. This year, we have to print early, you know, the, the demand is way, way up again, so that, that's something that, you know, has changed.
And how do you track, how do you, how does someone track the fact that I have a visitor's guide that brings me to Catalina?
Well, we, when they, when they request a visitor, most visitor guide requests that we process, there's a few that are still done by phone, but most are done by someone going on our website and saying, send me a visitor guide. You know, we have a handful of questions that we ask, they're voluntary, they don't all fill it out, but, you know, when do you intend to come, how long would you stay, and so on. And we're actually just pulling, because, because we have a brand-new website management system, we can draw a lot better data out of it, but we're still kind of on our learning curve, so we just, literally, this report was just pulled for me yesterday, and I was gonna digest it this weekend and see if there was anything I thought that was really significant in, in there. But we do ask, you know, your intention to travel and the time of year and so on. And I know one thing that stood out to me right away when I read it was the number of requests that we had had just in like the last month that were about winter travel. So I count that as a, as a huge success in meeting our, our goal of filling for need, which is, you know, sort of what we measure everything we do all the time about, is, you know, we, we hear loud and clear, we don't need to allocate chamber resources to filling hotel rooms the first week of July. We need to add, we need to put chamber resources toward filling rooms the first week of January. Makes complete sense, and that's one of the, you know, the measures we hold ourselves to all the time. But just, I mean, add $100,000, you know, I mean, you know, the visitor guide, which is actually revenue generating just barely for us, the advertising dollars cover the cost of its production and its layer-one distribution out to the racks and so on. Then, then in a given year, like this year, our postage went up, so we can, you know, that, that one can, can take it back down into the negative. You know, the visitor center where, you know, I actually pulled some numbers so I wouldn't risk misquoting. You know, our website has over 1.5 million visitors and over 6 million page views a year. At 100,000, I'd have to cut a lot of something out of there. Our free online hotel and vacation rental booking engine, which for last month, and it wasn't a good month for Matt's numbers, but we had over 400,000 dollars in transactions generated on that online booking system for our hotels and vacation rentals. And compared to them doing that on an other online travel agency where they're paying 20% commission, ours is, is a, is a no cost to them to do that. Our visitor center where we take over 11,600 phone calls a year, we answer over 10,000 emails and service over 40,700 walk-in travelers per year. And most of those people walk out with a direct referral to some other place to go spend money in the community. Most of those phone calls end with a, with either a transfer or, or a handoff to who to do business with. Attending and following up leads on eight trade shows, we've reduced significantly where we go and what we do, but we still are attending eight that we, by our measure, are bringing us a return. Printing and distributing the 75,000 visitor guides. The media relations and hosted media... The media relations and hosted media that result in multiple millions of impressions and, and therefore potential visitors. You guys are interested in talking about more events. We already either make or support or, or help with, with others. The promotion of events that draw and entertain our visitors. Our film office services, which we do in, in partnership with the city, that have in the last year brought us global brands and, and multiple days of room nights for production companies. And, and the most notable recently have been Netflix, Honda, Tumi, Nike, Adidas, Motorola, Pacific Sunwear, Universal Pictures. You know, the, the, lots and lots of value there. And, and I mentioned in a previous meeting that I think our film fees be a small revenue line, but that's something that we could actually look at for a revenue generation opportunity for the city because we are having success there, and I think our fees are low. So, you know, at a hundred thousand dollars, I'd be touching one or all of those things, not to mention taking away jobs. So.
See, that's really good information for people that are watching.
Yeah. Well, these are all the same stats that I report on every year when we come here for our annual report. I just did recent numbers.
But we just keep giving your, giving you less time.
Less and less time because I was told I took too long, yes.
And, and your information is available to the public.
Absolutely. If they can't find it on our website, which we're doing our best to have absolutely everything there, ask and we'll dig it up.
That was great. Well, I guess I didn't, I didn't catch you off guard.
I didn't, I, I didn't sleep for the last few nights thinking about this meeting. So whenever I couldn't sleep, I'd get up and boot the laptop and start looking for stuff, so.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Didn't mean for you not to sleep.
Mary.
Would you like to come forward, Randy?
Yeah.
If we are going to continue an in-depth conversation about TOT, strictly just TOT as a fundraising, not fundraising, but an idea to increase the revenues, then I would ask that we have a special meeting that's just for the TOT discussion so staff can give you all the background information and provide you. I'm not, I wasn't prepared today to have an in-depth conversation on it. So if there is direction to do that, then I would ask that we have nothing but a TOT discussion because it is a, a heavy subject and we should provide you with all the information that we possibly can.
Okay. Before I ask the question to the council, Mr. Brannick?
Thank you. Matt, I was interested when you were telling about the landfill and the amount of money that you've had to set aside in anticipation of that closure. My question is, are we doing the same thing with the sewer? Expansion, replacement, and if not, perhaps we should consider it.
That's a Michael Palmer class, I think.
Thank you.
We're not obligated to put into like a closure-type trust fund, but we do have a sewer capital improvement project plan as part of our season's assist order. We've got a couple requirements that we have to put together, plans that outline infrastructure improvements and outline things that we need to take care of within the ten-year timeframe and within a twenty-year timeframe. And every year, we go through and we update those and we allocate funds for those CIP expenditures. So we're, we constantly are budgeting money to make improvements to the sewer infrastructure. And then we're looking at other alternatives that we can do to extend that life and do more preventative maintenance rather than reactionary maintenance.
And are we funding that?
We are funding that under the sewer line item with that CIP, Capital Improvement Project budget for that. And we allocate money on an annual basis for that.
But those fees will probably be going up.
Part, part of the reason why we're looking at the cost-of-service study specific with the sewer is our operating costs have been higher than what were anticipated when we came up with those rates. But the, as Mike mentioned, our CIP plan was included when we came up with those rates. So we were planning on using the revenues we were bringing in from those sewer rates to pay for the, the ten- and twenty-year CIP plan we have with the sewer. The, the challenge we're running into is because our operating costs in the sewer were higher than what was projected in the study is to pay for those increased operating costs, we're actually drawing on our, our fund balance, the monies that, that we had set aside for sewer-related activities. So in the, the next cost-of-service study that we do, we would be updating the, the, the operating costs to reflect kind of what we've actually experienced in the last few years. But we would also be including that ten, twenty-year planned expenditure in the study. So when we develop the rates, we would be setting money aside to pay for those as, as part of that study. So we, I guess to answer the question is, we did plan for the CIP and those sewer revenues were to pay for it. The challenge we ran into is our operating costs were more than what we projected them to be when we came up with the last set of rates. And so now we're going to have to look at those, look at the operating costs, but also look at those rates again to make sure we're bringing in enough, not only to fund the operating costs, but also to fund the capital projects.
And, and that's where some of the deficiencies like Matt had brought up with the increase in utility costs. Those weren't factored in because of new state mandates and how we process things. So we want to recapture those into the new study so that we can bring those balances up.
We, we don't have a, a dedicated trust fund like we do the landfill where we set money aside, if, if that's the question. We do have a sewer fund which has monies in it that can go towards paying for those CIP. But we're, we're not required by the state to, to set up a, a trust account to cover that twenty-year CIP plan, I guess.
I think I understand. It appears we're a little short right now.
And we'll continue.
And if you have additional questions or want more information, we'll be available after this.
Thank you.
So, so call for the question on the TOT. Is it, do you all want to have a meeting on TOT? Or do you want to just say, no, we're not going to, we, the city, don't want to put it on the ballot?
Here's where I am after listening to everything. I, I'm not in favor of increasing TOT or warfage. I think that we don't want to make it more expensive for our guests to get here or stay here. I would be in favor of the sales percent tax increase. I think that's reasonable. And I think there's a lot of factors in this year that are maybe one-time factors that can change and be on the positive. So to raise the sales tax and then to also, you know, continue to look at other revenue-generating things like special events and see where we are. We always can go in those in the next six months or a year, but for right now, that's, that's where I would be at.
And, and my discussion wasn't on, on increasing the TOT. It was on decreasing the percentage that we give the chamber.
And I would not be in favor of decreasing the percentage.
Decreasing?
Yes.
I mean, if you all don't want to look at it, we won't look at it because I don't know if we have to have a consensus to, to look at it. And Cindy's not here, and I don't know what she would say.
I don't know.
I mean, I, I believe that the city, the community receives value from monies spent by the chamber. And I would hate to see that none of those monies reduced because I think the amount of value that we receive would be lessened and would affect, affect the visitors. But I also support the quarter cent sales tax.
I definitely support the quarter sales tax, even though we can't really say that. It's either we want it on the ballot or not because we can't have an opinion, remember?
We can have, we can have a personal opinion.
Okay, but, but we're not sitting here as a personal opinion.
Mary, you're only going to agree upon if it should be on the ballot for the voters to, not, if you are for or against it.
Okay, I think the sales tax should definitely be on the ballot. And I would like us to maybe have a little discussion about TOT. But again, if y'all, if it's two to one not to put it on the ballot, it stops here? Or we, or we can't even vote on that right now?
We're not voting on anything today. It's just direction to us. And, and just because the two gentlemen are not in favor of that, it can still go to the voters to determine. And that's, once again, it's up to the council to say, yes, I want to. But that doesn't stop the community from having an initiative on the ballot also.
So that's a good, interesting question. Does, does the community have to pay for that initiative?
No, but they have to follow the process laid out in the elections code.
Okay, so.
And that deadline is October twenty-fourth.
Okay, Michael's going to say something.
I, I was just going to say, so if you wanted us to schedule a separate study session to focus only on TOT, we could do that, and then you could make a decision, or you could just kill the conversation now and not have staff proceed forward with any sort of study session for TOT.
But we can't legally kill it right now until it comes before the council, right? Can we, can we just say we're not going to discuss TOT at all and then?
And that's it. I won't bring it back.
Basically, we're like voting on that right now.
No, you're providing direction to me, Annie, if you want to have a further discussion and.
Well, I would say provide direction, but I think those two are going to say no. So that means it just doesn't go anywhere, correct?
Is Steve and Ollie totally against having any further discussion with the full council?
Not against discussing it.
I don't mind discussing it, yeah.
Okay. All right, then we shall further discuss.
Then I will poll the council for a date, and I would really suggest that it would be within the next two weeks because if we are going to put something on the ballot, we need to get moving.
So, good, moving forward.
So what other revenue-generating ideas do you want to discuss?
I have one. So, as you all know, we've, we've approved medical marijuana as a delivery service. And all we get from that is sales tax, percentage of the sales tax.
There's no sales tax.
Because it's med, it's medical.
Excuse me. Wait, and then, okay, go ahead.
So there are three types of taxes you can receive from cannabis sales or three taxes that are applicable? Sales tax for medical cannabis where it's exempt from that type of tax. There's a fifteen percent excise tax. That goes to the California State Cannabis Tax Fund. But there's also a cannabis business tax, which you could charge on medical cannabis sales. But this time, the city does not have a medical cannabis.
Okay. All right. From what I understand, if they have a medical marijuana identification card, they do not pay sales tax.
If they have a revenue.
So if they have a recommendation from a physician, then the sales tax is on that, correct?
Yes. I got, I got a lot of stuff to go over. It's like a step-by-step.
I know, but I, but I haven't even gotten through my, my opening remark.
Well, yes, to answer the question though, there's a difference between an MMIC card and a doctor's recommendation. As a medical delivery service, you can service both, but only one is tax-exempt for sales tax.
And that is the MMIC card?
Yes.
The MMI card.
It just, it takes a whole extra step.
Because that's an approval through the state of California.
Yes. So a doctor's recommendation, the two things on medical is you got a doctor's recommendation. You go to a doctor, you pay a doctor fee. The doctor recommends that you benefit from the medical use of cannabis. You have this recommendation letter, and it's in the form of a letter, and you can present it to anybody. It's valid as your medical recommendation. Then you have an MMIC card. You have to go to the Department of Public Health, the State Department. It's usually county-run, so you would go to your local county. You would show them your doctor's recommendation, pay another fee, and then they mail you a state-issued license. That is exempt from everything.
Everything.
So it goes into the three taxes. You got your sales tax, your excise tax, and your city tax, if applicable.
Okay, we're going to stop right there. Thank you. So if you seem to have differing information from him, okay, right now, we're on the same page. Okay, so with the recommendation, the city would get a percentage of that eight and a half, or, or ten percent tax.
So for those, the city would get one percent of the ten percent.
All right, so, I'd like to take it a little bit further. However, if we approved, if, if, if the city, if the city approved adult use on cannabis, then we get a percentage of the sale, the sales tax, the excise tax, and whatever tax we put on local. And so I would like us to consider putting, if we put a tax, just to get it on the ballot, if we put a reasonable city tax on recreational cannabis, we have the opportunity to grab more funds. And there's, there's some discussion. I don't, I don't know if we want to have a totally different meeting on this or we can talk about this now, or just if you, if you want to review it. There's a way for the city to make heckle, heckle a lot more money. And Mr. Johnson, who has the delivery, if we, do you want to talk about your, your warehousing? And so we can kind of get that out. It was a way, it was a way to generate a lot of money.
Before I talked about the big picture, I would rather go into all the details of medical versus adult use, the tax. Just break everything down because it doesn't really make sense unless you break it down.
Do we want to have that discussion today? Start the discussion today? Do you, do you want to, because we have another half, half hour here?
I could probably break it down pretty quick.
I mean, do, do you want to talk, do you want to hear it? Let's just hear it. Do you want to hear it? Okay, I do.
Yeah.
Because this is a good possibility to make a lot of money for the city.
First, I want to note that this little handout that I got today, it does have one line that says cannabis sales produce a slight uptick in the food-drug group in, in sales tax, and everything else seems to have slower growth. So, like I said, you got medical use and adult use. Medical use follows the Compassionate Care Act of nineteen ninety-six. That is the recommendations. A qualifying patient is anyone eighteen years of age with a valid doctor's recommendation and a state ID. Doctor's recommendation versus the MMIC card, I already explained that. Basically, an MMIC card extends the cost. You pay another hundred dollars or more a year just to obtain this license. Adult use follows Malkersa law, which was just adopted under Prop sixty-four. And it is a lot simpler. It actually combines medical and adult use under one law instead of having all these laws to follow. And it's anyone over twenty-one years of age that can show a valid ID. Now, the taxes, you've got, I've already explained the three taxes. You got the state excise tax, and this tax is placed on all sales. And this tax is only allocated to municipalities that have allowed legal cannabis. So you guys have allowed the medical but not the legal. So they have certain allocations, like some goes to law enforcement, some goes to all this stuff. But that revenue from the excise tax doesn't, we won't really realize any of that until there's.
Adult use.
Adult use. Then you have the sales tax, which you explained pretty well how it's split up. And then a city tax, if applicable. It must be passed by the voters. It must have adult use language in it. And now that adult use, if you had an adult use ordinance, you can then create an adult use tax. And if we remember before, when this was first brought up, the discussion was we weren't going to tax medical marijuana because it is a medicine and it's a burden on the patient. Now we're talking about recreational or adult use, and that is a whole different, that's a whole different story. So, like I said, with the tax exemptions, the MMIC card, you still have to pay an excise tax. But unless we have a legal laws in place, we can't collect that. A doctor's recommendation would get sales tax and excise tax. And then adult use, you would get your excise tax, sales tax, and city tax. A decent city tax would be like three to five percent on adult use sales. The benefit of adult, of adult use is that all consumers have access to state-regulated product, not just medical patients. It helps eliminate the black market. Right now in California, the legal market is only one-third the size of the black market. And you see a, a direct relation to legalizing, reducing that black market.
And that black market stuff ends up into the hands of the younger kids.
Yes.
Much easier.
Let me tell you a story. So there's a California police officer that does this very often. He goes, he'll go to two underage individuals, each give them twenty dollars. And they'll ask one of them to go find, bring him back alcohol, and the other one to go bring him back cannabis. Every single time, the cannabis has come back first. And you want to know why? It's because it's not regulated, the black market's already breaking laws, and they don't care that they're breaking another law and giving it to a minor. A liquor store or a person walking into a liquor store to buy for a minor realizes that they're putting themselves at risk. So you, you're not going to break the law. Anyways, educating the public on the harm of black market products. There's plenty of articles right now about people being hospitalized with fake vape pens. And there is articles about marijuana being shipped into the country that is laced with fentanyl. about marijuana being shipped into the country that is laced with fentanyl and stuff like that. And that's not stuff that's coming out of the regulated market. That is stuff that's coming out of the black market. Studies also show that adult use saw an 8% reduction in teen use. Anywhere there was adult use, you saw an 8% reduction in teen use. It goes back to that police story where you don't have access to it as easily. Plain and simple, adult use provides easy access for all that qualify. I think this, I might have this written somewhere in here, but another good, another good fact is the grow, the biggest growing population in the cannabis industry is seniors, and seniors are actually purchasing adult-use marijuana for medicinal purposes, because they don't want to have to go to the doctor, they don't want to have to, they're self-medicating. But they're, instead of going through the process of getting the recommendation, the MMIC card, and going through all that and worrying about having your license expire every year, they're just saying, well, it's legal, I'm just going to go to the legal shop and get it that way. But some of the, now this goes into more moral issues. I know the city of Avalon has morals, we're conservative, and there's a lot of pushback on this. But adult use is 21, medical 18. The city ordinance prohibits underage sale of 21 under adult-use laws, Malkursa. We've only approved medical only. So the city ordinance is for medical only, and it actually defines medical cannabis or qualified patients as the same as the state's Compassionate Care Act in 1996. If the state approves adult use, this will allow a delivery business like myself to streamline the, the age limit. Right now, in medical only, I have to serve anyone 18 or over. If I, if there was adult use available, I could streamline the process, say everyone has to be 21 or over, whether you're medical with a valid rec, or you're just adult use. It makes it simpler process for intaking people, and also the argument is I can now, how do I say, the, the, now that if you're 18 to 21, you can have a qualified caregiver provide you those medicines if you need them, as a medical patient. The reason I'm up for this is because of my own personal belief and my own experience here in Avalon. My personal belief is that the 21 creates a barrier to teen use. By having 21 and over, you got, you're 18 to 21-year-olds that are out of high school, but not in the bars yet, and they are constantly talking with underage people. If you create that barrier from 18 to 21, you are now limiting how much stuff's actually going to get into our schools and get to our underage population. So, without the adult-use regulations, I'm required to serve only 18 and over, and I can't make that decision to serve 21 and over, because then it's like you, as a business owner, you aren't supposed to make that decision. I'm breaking the law now. I'm not following the, the laws that are provided. And like I said, seniors are the biggest growing consumer category. There's, the, it's associated with less opioid use, it's associated with buying adult use instead of medical use, but using it for medicinal purposes, and like I said before, it's easier to maintain. Now, with all that being said, I kind of want to mention the big picture. So I am the delivery service on Catalina, and no other place in California can deliver over to here, because your order has to leave a warehouse or your facility before it can get to the end consumer. Nobody's going to take that boat ride, which is illegal to do as a retailer. Nobody's allowed, nobody's going to take that boat ride and service people here on the island from the mainland. But I've found a way for us to be able to do the exact opposite. I am, I am expanding to the mainland, whether it's recreational or medical. I'm doing it, and we're working on it as we speak. So how it works is I could go over and be medical only right now. I can go to places like Hollywood or Oceanside, and I can get another permit, basically, that piggybacks on my current one here in the city of Avalon. It says they allow me to buy a store, a business location at their place. I can piggyback on the city of Avalon, and now I can have a hub over there that would deliver anywhere over on the mainland. Now, because I am licensed out of the city of Avalon, all that tax revenue comes back to the city of Avalon, meaning there's virtually no impact on the city by making those sales on the mainland, and that revenue comes back to the island. So...
So we could either look at getting just our percentage of the eight and a half percent on the people that don't have the MMIC card, or if we put in a tax for recreational, then the recreational could be sold over there, and all of that revenue comes to the city.
Yes. So with medical only, we will get less exposure over town. We will generate less tax revenue, and the consumers on the mainland will actually overlook our ad listings, like our weed maps or our Yelp listing, any of those listings, will get overlooked by the next person in line that actually has adult use. They, oh, it's going to be easier to go through this guy, let me go, so they look over you. I, I do call this whole approach an outward approach. It's like, nobody else can actually come here and sell, but we can go over there and sell, because we can sell in any state, city, is, yeah. The, basically, you're talking, the medical would bring in, I, I don't know, because I don't know the numbers, this is new, and, but you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars maybe, or less, to hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue. Basically, allowing adult use and having local tax on the next ballot, which would have to be submitted in October, and having that revenue generated over town. I'm also in favor of not having the adult use go into effect until that tax measure is passed, so contingency. So you pass this tax, you pass this adult-use ordinance, you put a tax measure on the ballot. If that tax doesn't pass, we don't have adult use. If we, if that tax measure passes, then now we have adult use. Keep in mind, we started to talk about medical cannabis a couple of years ago, and I am still not open to this day. I will be giving a status report at the next council meeting, but I'm still not open to this day. We're very close, but we're, we're almost there. So just because you approve something or make an ordinance for it now or before October, doesn't mean it's going to even be in effect by March. So...
Yeah, if, if it were approved by the voters in March, then you or someone would have to apply for another permit.
Yeah, I would still have to go to the state and apply for the state adult-use license, which will take time, and, yeah, there's a lot, I have to, yeah.
Because one of the thoughts, or one of the comments is with the, with the delivery, we would say, okay, we would look at it for a year and see how it goes. And, and I think by that time, we would still have that year's, definitely that year's worth of time to look at it.
I was supposed to report on a quarterly basis, I believe, so once I'm open, you guys would definitely have information before the, the time comes for this to actually go into effect. It's just...
So we were looking at creative ways of generating revenue, and I just thought that this was what I would want to bring forward. Hopefully, after today, this will generate some more conversation.
Instead of, yeah, instead of a part of a 10% sales tax, you're talking about if you had to do a 5% city tax, a 15% excise tax, you guys are getting a part of a 30% tax now or something, right? Instead of just 10% and 1% of that 10%?
Right.
So, any questions?
Are there any questions? You boys are sitting there awful mighty quiet.
Just listening.
The only comment I'd make is I'm, I think this is a different topic and subject for somewhere else. I'm not going to, as a revenue-generating source, I'm not going to be supportive of something that might not be good for our community just to get revenue. So, I mean, if, as a bigger picture, if it's something that the committee wants to talk about, but just, just strictly to get more revenue, I, I'm not supportive of that. I mean, it's, I'm glad that, you know, I support, you know, and the people that need it, and they get it, and they have it. And I think you're doing a good thing with that. It's, I'm not against that, but just to make a little extra money, or maybe even a dip in what, what it is, so...
Well, I respect your opinion, but I know that there's still a lot of black-market cannabis there that we don't seem to...
Well, I think I would just, you know, I mean, you play out a good picture. I mean, there's a lot of good statistics that are probably true. I used to like to hear the other side of that, you know, as a bigger, you know, not, as a bigger conversation with all sides at a regular meeting...
Exactly.
To get all the information.
See, I kind of dumped this on you today, you kind of, yeah. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, Council?
Still, good morning.
Morning.
Is the issue of bringing in a third cruise ship still on the table? That was put out at the last council meeting? As a, as a genera, as a revenue generator?
Oh, I don't think that is, the cruise ship is not a dead conversation. And it's a 20, something that wouldn't happen if, if every, until 2021.
So this, this is a déjà vu moment for me.
Okay.
We bought a home in, in Key West in 1985, and which we just sold this year. In 1969, the cruise industry started coming into the Keys. And between 1969 and 1984, there was a total of 267 cruise ship calls on Key West. And then the city said, oh, how about we add more cruise ships to generate more revenue? And then they added a cruise ship, and then two cruise ships, and then three cruise ships. And fast forward 34 years later, there's three cruise ships seven days a week. That's why we sold our house there, because as my granddaughter aptly put it, is disgusting. So, once you make that step toward adding one, it's where you're going to end up, because it's easy money to go get another one, and another one. And, and the article that came out recently was they're, they're proposing dredging the last living coral reef in the continental U.S. to allow for bigger cruise ships. So, the, the line of how much is enough gets wiped out, it's because there's always one more to add. So, so I don't think that's a good idea, just like the pot. I don't think that's a good idea for, for additional revenue. Not that I think the pot's a bad idea, but that's that, that step in that direction. That's my two cents. And that's why I love living here, and I, I'm seeing the same scenario, creating, recreating it, so, thanks.
Thank you for your input. And just, just to let you know, Ernie, and I don't have mine with me, but there was, just for the, kind of the facts and what has happened, if you didn't, well, you probably watched the council meeting, but Jim put out a little note on kind of that status and where that has been. Have you seen that?
I've read it.
Oh, okay, all righty. Because that's the latest information that any of us have. Yes.
I have further comments on that. Honorable mayor and city council, cruise ships have been calling on Avalon for over 30 years. So why is our infrastructure in steady decay? The notion that additional revenue from a cruise ship will lift us out of our fiscal shortfall is a fallacy. The decision to add an additional cruise ship sets the precedent to move the visitor further toward the amusement park experience, as evidenced by the rollercoaster, proposed roller coaster. As this precedent evolves, it will be, create a greater labor and housing shortage. The city will hire more personnel for an already overworked and understaffed maintenance crew. Fire, paramedics, and other safety services will need to be expanded. Wi-Fi and cell service are already a problem on cruise ship days. The ticking time bomb of city pensions will further stress and push the city towards bankruptcy. Many landlords are requiring businesses to stay open year-round. The weather, and thank you, Matt, for mentioning the weather word, will never be conducive for a year-round business model, further pushing commerce into the impacted summer months. The council's communication put out by the chamber outlining the downturn in visitor count last year is misleading. The visitor count was down due to 25 inches of rain and severe weather this past season, compounded by a cold summer. Visitor count is also down in part due to the expense of getting here and enjoying the visit. Weather and cost limits visitors. Cruise ships are detracting from the experience that was once Avalon. Dr. Katie Canfield's dissertation Tourism and Justice on Catalina Island: Burden, Power, and Decision-Making concluded, "The uneven distribution of the benefits and the burdens of tourism, tourist development, is creating an experience of social injustice for residents today on tourism-dependent Catalina Island." Her survey determined that a handful of influential people and businesses make the decisions that impact the town. Everyone else is afraid to voice an opinion for fear of retribution, even refusing to take an anonymous survey. It appears there is a handful of businesses focused on turning Avalon into a cruise ship port with a complicit city council who sees this as a panacea to solve financial problems. The council is abdicating their responsibility by allowing the chamber and harbor department to make this decision for the community. Once the collective decision is made to move down the path of adding more cruise ships, a precedent is established to legitimize their never-ending growth. To quote Joni Mitchell, "You don't know what you got till it's gone."
Thank you for your comments. And I, I don't know what the word you was, you used about the council, or the chamber and the harbor making all of the decisions. I don't think, nothing has been decided. There hasn't, you know, we're, and Denise is, the city manager's involved in those conversations as well, so, anyway. Because I don't think anything, and nothing has been decided, because there's no, no even real, real...
It's all F.
It's all F, yeah.
Oh, what was decided is not to have two ships on Tuesday, and not a ship on Saturday.
Right, right. Okay. So where are we? Any other, any other ideas? Mine went over like a red balloon, let's see what...
I think, I think we're going to have a discussion, council agenda discussion about the sales tax, and then we're going to have a study session on TOT. And if you want to throw cannabis into the TOT discussion. It's all here, so three of us.
Exactly, exactly. Okay. And again, it would just be whether to put it on the ballot or not. So, and that's kind of like we, I think we've said before, let the voters, some of this, just let the voters decide, you know? Okay? Well, is there anything else on behalf of the finance department, or the community, or Denise and Michael that you want to talk about?
I'm sorry, I had to step out when, when you were starting the conversation on marijuana, because I wasn't feeling well, so I'll view the tape to see what I missed.
We may, well, so Stevie says he's not interested in making money off of, off of cannabis. Ollie didn't say much, so we might end up having a discussion, a community discussion on that, and then my comment was to vote. What's, you know, why not put every, why not put everything on the ballot we want to put on the ballot, or the community might want on the ballot?
We can bring this back during the study session, like you had indicated, for, if this is your direction, to bring it back when we talk about TOT. Not being as familiar with some of the information that Carl brought up, and not being as familiar with how complex some of those taxes would work. If we were to do that within two weeks, I don't know if we'll have all of the information necessary to bring to you. We'll do our best to give you as much as possible to make an informed decision on how you want to proceed for that. But I know medicinal marijuana and recreational marijuana are extremely complex topics, and two weeks to try and figure out all of those next steps necessary, verify all of that information, and then develop revenue scenarios, if you will, you know, if this, then here's what you could potentially expect, might take some additional time.
I do know places like the... I do know places like the League and different people have, have, there's information, there's plenty of information I know gathering and then see what it is appropriate for us or how it fits to us or whatever. Well, okay, so even if it takes a month, yeah, it gets in the middle of September. And then, okay, but if we put something on the ballot, do, we just put something on the ballot. It's not like we have to have a hearing for this and a hearing for that and all of that, right? It's just we write an initiative to put on the ballot.
You, it's the public that puts an initiative forward. You can, at a regular city council meeting, we would have to have direction. We would come forward with changing, if it's something in our ordinance or whatever. I'm sorry, Annie, I'm...
You're not feeling...
I'm not feeling good.
Okay, so we would have to have an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So, okay, we'll just do whatever we can. But if somebody from the public says, "Well, we want to put together the initiative." It doesn't have to be an ordinance change for us. It just goes on as an initiative.
There, if the public, I can tell you this. If the public comes forward with an initiative, it has to be in a very strict, concise format. It has to read as an ordinance. We do not help the public. The elections code does not allow me as the city clerk or you as the council to advise them, to direct them. They produce the initiative, which is in the form of an ordinance. It comes before the council. After legal has gone through it, you, at that time, you can go, "Okay, this ordinance makes sense." You can determine then that you could adopt it if it's not a tax thing that has to go to the voters.
Right.
And we go from there.
Okay, alright. We're going to dismiss Denise, and we're really not going to say too much. But go ahead, Carl.
The only thing I wanted to say was you can't pass an adult-use tax if you don't have an adult-use ordinance. I could, I could make an initiative to pass adult use, but then you're waiting till the next ballot to pass a tax for it. So you guys would decide on the ordinance aspect and allowing adult use or changing any ordinances. And then we can have an initiative on this ballot for the tax because it would, you can't have a tax for something that's not in the law.
Right, right.
And Mayor, what we can do too is go back right after this and consult with the attorney and draft up a memo just in terms of, to council to say, "Here's the steps that we would need to take," and a potential timeline for that.
Okay. And that's with anything. That'll be the same with the sales tax or the, okay. Okay, Denise, please leave the room. Alright, thank you all for being here and meeting it. Thank you, Matt, for all your work, and Michael, and everyone. We mean it, John.